...of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order, 24th, 2016, 7 o'clock. With us today, could we introduce ourselves, please?
Darrell Wilson.
Barbara Hagenbart.
John King.
Jim Barkhouse.
Roger LeSage.
And we have here five members. So I will ask Ms. Hagenbart to please be the holding member.
Oh, okay.
Yes, because... Okay. First order of business is adoption of the minutes from April 6th. Is someone prepared to make a motion regarding the minutes? Okay, so I move we approve the minutes as written. Is there a second?
Just a second.
Is there any discussion, additions or corrections to the minutes?
I shouldn't go off.
Hearing none, all in favor, please? Thank you. Next item of business is a modification to an approved but lapsed major use site development plan and modification to an approved major subdivision titled Store Modifications for Ellsworth Investments, the proposals to have the proposed 9,000 square foot addition detached from instead of attached to the existing Martins Tractor Supply building on an 18.7 acre property at 461 High Street, tax map and lot 11-4 in the commercial zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Before this starts, may I say something about why the agenda item reads like it reads?
Okay.
Just so that, because that may be a question. So it was approved and they just missed by not much being able to continue by pulling a permit. So there was a subdivision that was approved. The approval, the previous approval included a subdivision and a site plan. Okay, the subdivision was because there was now three units. Okay? And the site plan was that unit was attached. So if we had titled this differently, you would have had two site plans because the subdivision was still, is still approved, that has not lapsed. What has lapsed is the site plan. So just to minimize confusion and to, because there was a lot of time spent on this and because really nothing changes with the exception of moving a building on the pavement, we thought it would be best to be able to work with one site plan that included the approved subdivision that you'll be modifying and then you're kind of modifying to the site plan if you want.
Now, anyone here wishes to remain confused, is my guess.
So you're still confused?
No.
Okay. So it was just more of a technicality, trying to keep things straight in the record, so...
It's sort of, but the essence of it is moving the structure.
Correct, correct, correct. Thank you.
I think we can handle this.
Awesome.
Not a promise. So, go ahead, please.
And you want that first table, correct?
Yes.
Can you see it okay?
Yeah, now we have that in effect.
Yes.
If you could put it over, if it could stand over there somehow so the public can see that, that might be helpful. Okay.
Okay. My name is Gina Detor of Carpenter Associates, the consulting engineering firm representing Ellsworth Investments LLC. Some of you may remember me when I was here before on May 2nd, 2012. At that time, the planning board approved an application for a minor subdivision and modification to a major conditional use permit entitled Store Modification, where we proposed to construct a 9,000 square foot retail building attached to the existing Martins and Tractor Supply store. This is the plan that was signed and approved. The future tenants were finding it difficult to blend the facade with the existing building and requested that the proposed building become a freestanding structure. This site has low parking demands and ample impervious space, so with your approval, we can accomplish this request. Vehicle access to the site will continue to be off High Street, and I'll actually show you what we're proposing. So this is the proposed new location. So vehicle access to the site will continue to be off High Street. With the recommendation of the Ellsworth Fire Department and the help of the accessing department, naming the existing entrance as proposed to be Martin's Way. Pavement markings in front of the building and attached to the existing sidewalks are proposed for pedestrian circulation. Like in the 2012 application, the site parking for the proposed addition requires 33 parking stalls. The existing Martins and Tractor Supply store requires 335. That totals 368. The total spaces provided are going to be 520, with 17 marked for the handicap. No changes are proposed to the site that affect pre-development. No changes in drainage size or patterns are proposed. The existing system can safely and efficiently accommodate the stormwater resulting from the proposed building. Runoff will continue south to the original detention pond without negative impacts. Best management practice will be required during construction. There is no significant wildlife or rare botanical features documented on this parcel. Any tree or landscaping removed will be relocated on site. There is no hazardous waste associated with this project. The project does not lie within the shoreline zone or a flood plain. There will be a few wall pack lights added to the proposed exterior building. Basically, this is the same application as you saw in 2012 with the exception of the building being detached. Ellsworth Investments has enjoyed being in your city and hopes to introduce a new tenant. Our intent is to follow the land use ordinance and to receive planning board's approval. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, that's going to be placed right on the pavement, right?
Correct.
To me, pad, whatever.
Anyone, yeah, anyone else?
What is the new building for?
Retail.
Retail?
Yeah.
So is it your assertion that the DEP letters that you have here, even though that they're quite dated, there's one dated 2011, these are still valid?
Correct.
It says...
That was when the transfer took place, from the Walmart to Martins.
I'm looking at a letter, state of mind, DEP, it's three pages, and the last page, 3 of 3, says if the construction or operation of the activity is not beginning within two years, this equivalent will lapse. So the, what was that specifically for? Was that for the renovation of the building into the Martins and Tractor Supply?
You're talking about the letter that's behind DEP order?
Yeah, it's Site Location and Development, Site Standard Conditions, page 3 of 3, there's a paragraph, paragraph number six, like fourth from the bottom.
I'm not sure where you are, because the DEP letter that should be in your application is like quite lengthy.
I have it in my package right before the section that starts financial capacity. It's the page right before that.
Yeah, that's the transfer order.
Okay.
Yep. That is when Martins purchased the lot from Walmart.
Okay. And it was timestamp 2011-01-01, is that, is that a date where the signature is? Where it says DEP and there's this scrawl here that looks like a signature?
That's the signature, yes.
Is there a timestamp right next to it that says 2011, or am I, is that just a number that happens to look like a year?
No, I believe this letter was written, written in January on the 10th in 2011.
And so this is still valid, or?
This just claims that Walmart does not pertain to like the site law that was approved by the state. It's now going to be Martins' responsibility.
Okay. All right. So the DEP is, the fact that this was a, this is still valid for this, even though the modification to the city, that paperwork lapsed, the DEP's stuff is still intact for us?
Correct, correct.
Okay. I also noticed that you asked for two waivers, one for the storm water, which in my mind makes sense, the storm water really hasn't changed. You also asked for a waiver for the lighting plan?
Site lighting plan, yes.
And I guess my thought would be to see maybe within 150 feet of that building what the lighting plan would be. I wouldn't want to see the lighting plan for the entire parcel, but the entrances and exits of that building, I think, would be something that would be depicted in some sort of a lighting plan.
So the wall packs that are going to be on the building?
Yeah, whatever's, whatever's within 150 feet of that building.
If you look under your lighting section, we have the specs for the wall, the wall packs, and then there's a luminary plan.
Okay. And so does that meet the average minimum and maximums for the entrances and exits of the buildings?
It did last time and it should this time, too, yes.
Okay, so this is, then, help me out here, the, the wall plaques are in exactly the same place on the building?
Yes.
It's just the building's been unplugged and moved?
Yes.
Are there any, so now that the buildings are separated and the original lighting plan didn't anticipate a gap between the two buildings, is that gap now that you've opened up, is that adequately lit?
Yes, because it was the Walmart. So if you look at the proposed plan, you will see where there are existing site lighting. There will be one that's going to be removed and replaced over here.
Uh huh.
So that will open up this one. You have...
So to the...
One here, which opens, which lights this.
To the, this side of the green building?
Right here.
And to the, this side of the red building? Yeah, that, that zone in between there.
There's a wall pack there and a wall pack, two wall packs here.
Okay. And the wall pack on the side of the building is existing?
To the best of my knowledge.
Or you added that as part of this proposal?
I would have to double check, but I think it's existing.
Okay. So the, the green block itself, then?
Those will be new.
Those, those weren't on there before when it was up against the building? When it was proposed to be up against the building?
There was one, two, three before.
Okay.
Now there's going to be two on this side, so there's two, four, six.
Okay. Is the city comfortable with the, the proposed lighting, then? That it's going to meet the ordinance just by way of verbal description?
If it didn't demonstrate the numbers, I can't.
I can understand not wanting to redo the whole lighting plan. I'm, I'm not really concerned about that.
And if you look at your luminary sheet, each wall pack will go out 40 feet.
So what candle power spec is that? Is that?
Would that be the 52?
It looks like four. What I, what I might like to propose...
Excuse me? Could you just identify yourself for the record?
Randy Bragg from Carpenter Associates as well?
Thank you.
Sorry. What I might like to propose, if it helps everyone's comfort level, is to do a foot cado level around the building and show that to code enforcement to make sure we meet those average guidelines that you have. If we can do it as you propose, within some distance of the new proposed building.
Yeah, a reasonable distance. I'm mostly concerned with the entrances and exits.
Yeah, as, as we were, too. That's why we added the wall packs, the extra wall packs, to kind of increase the, the foot cado level where the pedestrians would be walking. So we can certainly do that and include a bunch of the existing site lighting that's there, too, and give you a print within, did you say 150 feet, 100 feet?
Whatever you think's reasonable. I mean, I just picked that number out of the air. That would be the absolute maximum I would go. I think it's, it's like 120 feet to the other building or something.
I think wherever the, the lights overlap, if there's a, a post, if their light impact overlai, overlaps a lamp, an existing post where there's a light, then it should be noted. Then I would ask that it also be submitted with, in a table format as the ordinance asks, comparing required requirements, what the standard is and what the proposed condition are going to be. And I would like it to, I think what Randy is saying is submit it to Dwight before Dwight issues a permit, but I also would like to see it so we can have it as part of the planning board record.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And please just limit it to that area that's around the building. You don't need to do the whole parking lot or the...
Sure.
The existing building, just so we have a record of that. That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
And let me ask Dwight, are you okay with this proposal?
Yeah.
So if it doesn't meet, then they would have to come back? Is that the idea? Is to demonstrate that they meet, basically?
Yeah, to demonstrate that they meet.
Just make sure that's clear.
Well, okay. I could suggest something that doesn't involve coming back to us, but that if it does not meet the requirements of the ordinance, you wouldn't issue a permit until it did.
We can do that.
Yeah, that, does that be, sound reasonable, everyone?
That's fine.
We're, this is just, this is just an approval meeting, right? We're not, there's not two meetings here, this is just...
Correct.
Well, that's the idea, is to prevent a, having to sit down again.
So that would be a condition, then, that we would put on the permit?
Mm-hmm.
So depict lighting. And thank you for agreeing to that.
It's not that we don't enjoy having you here. We're not rejecting you in that sense.
So just, just...
That's fine, no, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just that in, like, thinking here, maybe in the motion also address if you are accepting that waiver or not, or you're accepting the waiver upon having demonstrated X, Y, and Z. Just because now we have a waiver provision on the application, or in the signature block, there may be, the condition could be listed also, that would work for me, actually. I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't really thinking of going with a waiver because the submission, this minimal submission would meet the requirements.
So it would be approval with condition that, okay, perfect.
Okay. Just want to make sure it works.
If that's all right with...
That's fine.
Okay, those were the questions that I had.
Are you sure? It doesn't seem like...
I can check again, but yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Anyone else have any questions on the board? This is a public hearing and anyone may comment upon this matter. If you wish to do so, please be recognized by the chair and then go to the microphone at the podium, state your name for the record, and give us your comment. Does anyone wish to speak? No? Okay, I close the public hearing, and what does the board wish to do with this?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to this modification for an approved but lapsed major use site development plan and modification to an approved minor subdivision titled Store Modifications as listed in Agenda Item Number Two, I make a motion that we approve this modification with the condition that the applicant provide a depiction of lighting within a reasonable radius of the new building for the code enforcement officer to review, to make sure that it meets the standards, and that we grant the waiver for the storm water. And it meets all the other criteria and standards of the ordinances, and that we approve the project.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I guess I would just like to amend that, that any, that waiver approval needs to be on the plan, the one for the storm water.
List the waivers, you mean? Yes, they are.
Okay.
No, but it prove in the block, approved with conditions, and that that be listed?
Yeah, on the plan, that was the intent, was what we just discussed about the lighting and the storm water.
Be added under conditions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
Yep.
So that was my amendment.
Your, your second still stands?
Yes, it does.
Now, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item of business is preliminary plan for a major subdivision entitled Hardwood Bridge by Coastal Builders and Sun LLC. Proposals to create eight plus lots, one to a joiner, and develop eight residential buildings on a 10.76 acre property at 141 North Bend Road, tax map 23, lot one in the rural zone. Someone representing?
Yes, sir. I'm Mike Aaron of the Land Surveyor, representing the Coastal Builders.
It's been a long time since we've seen you.
Yes, it is, sir. What I've got is a subdivision that was...
May I just interrupt from Michelle?
Yes.
We previously approved something similar.
You approved, so this, you should have the minutes of the prior approval in your package?
Yes.
That was approved, and it never was recorded in the registry, indeed, because there was a condition that the board had imposed regarding a right-of-way matter to be clarified, and that never got clarified. So, and now things have changed, so Mac has redesigned it to, actually to be better to meet the standards of today.
So in effect, the previous subdivision never happened?
Right.
Correct, except that matter of that right-of-way, I think, is still there. But we'll, you'll get to that.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
All right. What I've got here now is we've got an eight lot subdivision, one lot was sold to a joiner, which is shown on the plan. I've added one extra lot on the west side of the road. The road itself is physically in the same place, but we have a whole new set of engineering for the road, storm water, the phosphorus control. I guess it's... There's also a new traffic study, things like that. The other item that was back from the original subdivision is the right-of-way issue, which was a 50-foot right-of-way to go to Buzel, the adjoining landowner on the south. What I've done, as I was doing this, we've left that design in place. I also have tried to obtain, or we will obtain, excuse me, a right-of-way or a DOT entrance permit for the strip of land that they own, the joint up on the south. And what we're also going to do is we're going to continue to convey this right-of-way as it's shown on my plan. So they'll have two options, one a time, and we are going to convey that right-of-way to them, which was an issue from earlier on that never got finished.
Mr. Chairman, but Mac, could you explain, so we pulled the deeds and it's not clear, is, is there in the deeds something that said that this property owner, the subject property, has to provide a needsman through his land to the Buzel land? Or is this, was this a handshake deal?
I, I believe it was probably a handshake deal, wasn't it?
Yep, pretty much.
You need to come to the microphone.
I do.
Well, if Mr...
These are the Buzels.
Just for the record, could you identify yourself?
I'm Jeff Buzel, representing Wayne Buzel, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, this, we've talked to the, these guys. There was three things that we wanted last time in the wording for the right-of-way, and he's got a copy of them. It was basically, we don't need to pay for any maintenance on our section of that right-of-way until we develop back there. And I think you guys wanted to see where it says, you know, if we develop a large amount back there and the road needs to be bigger, that we would pay for that. But you're basically, we're just, just a, just a, we just want access to the back of that land, and we've talked to him and they're working with us to, there's three items here that I copy of that we'd like the wording of for that right-of-way.
Okay. And that's what I, I agree to put that on the plan.
Yeah.
So you're comfortable with the situation, the way it's going to work out?
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just want it to say that we don't have, he's, he's got a copy of what we wanted to say, that we don't, we're not going to maintain it, we're probably not going to use it for, who knows? But we just want to protect ourselves for the future.
Yeah, understandable.
And this, this came from the planning board as far as the wording. You people have the copy.
Hold a sec. Michelle?
So what I'm trying to figure out is, it just, that's a state-owned road, it's a minor, I think it's a minor collector. The state does not have very strict standards about curb cuts there. So if these two parties are working together via some type of handshake or whatever the story behind it, I think at all, at one point, it was all owned by the Buzel, and they split up a prop, a piece of it. So now we would potentially have two curb cuts, because the land, the land that Mr. Buzels, the Buzels own, is a large piece of property. Obviously, right now, it's a, it's a woods lot, I understand, or it has nothing on it, but it could have something. So it's not clear, and we've talked about this.
I know.
It's not clear to me what we, what are the, the two abuddies are trying to achieve, and what is, what's good for the city? Why would you be keeping a 66-foot strip next to the road? That's two curb cuts in a row on a state road. So I'm just, and regardless of state, I mean, we have some language in the ordinance, so I think that's what I'm still not getting, where, what's the purpose?
We're just trying to keep the right-of-way that we have there, so we don't have to have two roads side by side in the future. We kept the land years ago, we kept a 60-foot piece there just for protection, so we could get back there at some point in time. so we could get back there at some point in time. But they're willing to let us use their entrance so we don't have to have two next to each other if we ever decide to use it. So we're just trying to make this simple and have one entrance in there and have that piece of land there for the future. I want to put a stonewall, I don't... I, we're not trying to put two curb cuts right next to each other right now. We're trying to stay with our original plan, so we only have one road coming out of there.
Okay, so if the Buzzo, okay, so I think I'm okay because if the Buzzo have right-of-way and the Buzzo decided to come and they wanted to develop the rest of the land and they had a right-of-way, I would say, well, you can't get another curb cut, you're going to use that right-of-way.
Right, and we're good with that, that's what we're trying to accomplish, yeah.
Because he's come in my office, I don't know, a million and a half times, and we've been turning this thing around. And even when he came today, I'm still, I had something to do, I had to go to lunch, but I had to go to lunch. I was going to lunch, but I was like, oh, that's it, we're not talking about it. And I was a bit confused, but I'm happy.
You're all set? Yeah, that's, we, I mean, in this way, we do, I mean, if it worked out better to have two roads next to each other, we'd do it, but I...
I'd like to ask that he doesn't come back tomorrow.
That is not a planning board issue. But I would point out that it seems that we're really here, all of us, to keep Michelle happy.
That's our whole goal, that is.
You mean Jenna?
No, no, she's here to also keep you happy.
Okay, back to work.
My point was that the deed had already been conveyed and left a strip for them.
Yeah.
All I was doing was trying to get a bill of entrance permit for them for that. But understanding the same issue she's just talking about, we're going to provide that right-of-way to them, which allow them to do that without anything to do with the strip that was kept from before. The owner, but this will allow them to come right down through there. And the fact that we got the entrance permit is something they could have in their hand and hang on to.
Yeah.
But we will provide in this prescription of this with these conditions.
Very good.
I think that will cover that.
As long as everyone and the ordinance is happy, we can't ask for much, Mr. Chairman.
And I've talked to the fire department and I'm going to use the things they offer to me in here as conditions of maintenance as well as construction of what we're going to do. I still will need to kind of meet again and finalize that. Other than that, I think most things are in the application package they had. And if you've got any questions, I guess.
Roll board, questions?
In the stormwater description, there's a buffer and level spreader that are part of the stormwater management plan. Are those on one of the subject lots or in the remains area?
Yeah, they're on one of the subject lots and there will be a condition in that, there'll be a note on the plan stating that it is. The deed will also state that there is, and there will be provision to maintain that. And that will be clear in the deed as well as a note on the plan.
Okay, good, that was my question. And then there was mention of a wooded buffer. Is that contained outside that lot?
It's on the site plan, there's a square showing.
Yeah, I'm familiar with where it's oriented. My question was, is that wooded buffer going to be protected as part of the...
That's going to be protected with the same language that those other two things are.
Was that, is that wooded buffer on, like, lot number two or something, or is it outside?
It's on lot two.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, these items are on lots.
They're both on lots, yeah.
See, in the original plan, there was a huge, there was a huge attention for it. What we were able to do was redesign the stormwater and the drainage such that we could keep things in this area. And with that wooded buffer, it allowed us to cover the phosphorus as well as, and with these lip spreaders and that little bit of drainage.
How does that interact with the right-of-way that you're proposing then to that adjacent lot? Is there clearance there? Does it, I don't see it depicted on top of that.
No, it's against it. Just the lip spreader and anything to do with that only goes to the edge of that right-of-way that will be conveyed to the back. It doesn't go into that.
And is the, let me just ask a sort of a dumb question. And the right-of-way is like 50 feet wide.
Right.
And you would probably never build a road like 50 feet wide. So coming up to the edge of it, the edge of the pavement's not going to come up to that. It's going to be...
We're only going to the edge of that right-of-way, we're not going into... They have the total space to build a 20-foot road.
Regardless of what size it would ever be in the future, okay. So all that stormwater stuff is out of the way of the right-of-way?
Right, right. And like I say, you have all the current new calculations and the whole package is in there. But this shows it on C1, which is, shows the different, and there's a lot more detail. But that will be described in lot two D that is encumbered onto them and therefore accepted and retained by the Road Owners Association.
Okay. Is there any, is there any shoreland zone on this, the larger property that's being divided?
Not on ours. Their property goes to the pond down below.
Uh-huh.
But that's a long ways away.
That's the adjacent lot. This parcel is being divided and none of this parcel that's divided is in the shoreland zone.
No, no, it's hundreds and hundreds of feet away to the pond.
Okay. The other, the other thing that wasn't clear to me after reading about the right-of-way, the way it was depicted on the map, it seemed like the right-of-way was drawn from his property line to the road. And I was thinking that his right-of-way would extend from his property line all the way to the entrance, to your proposed road. I was thinking his right-of-way would extend from his property line all the way to the existing state road. And it would overlap on top of your road in that section where it was common.
I understand what you mean, let me show you this. Well, we got, we showed the right-of-way here.
Right, so...
But it's going to, what the right-of-way is actually going to be starting up here, go right down here, and then go in there.
Okay, so it is this entire length thing?
It's that entire piece, yes.
This access is shared here?
Right.
And then it's his when...
This is separate there.
Okay.
And the description I've written covers right from the road down around both of them.
Great, great, okay. The other question I had was about lot number two's subsurface disposal. There was some language in the, in the package that talked about having sort of a viable solution for two systems on every lot. And then that particular lot mentioned that there would need to be, if it was a three-family dwelling or larger, there would need to be like multiple systems installed and that there was maybe three or four locations there. Can you sort of affirm that if one of those systems were to fail, that there's enough space on that lot to do another one?
Yeah, what I did, if you look at the northern end of block two on the plan, you'll see there are three test pits. Each one of those was tested and designed suitable to each carry a system. And there's other soil involved. There's even more soil stress farther down near where the drainage areas are. You've got enough soil in three different spots, which makes it, instead of just two, I did two. Because it steps down, it's quite a slope and you get these flat areas. So you've got three different spots that are suitable for a system. So that covers your two, a backup system situation.
There was just some mention in the application about if it were a three-bedroom house, it might need to use two of those?
Yeah, and the reason he did that was, on the lower end of it, there's soil for the whole thing. But he mentioned so that it would cover if someone built one and needed to use the second one. There's room enough in there. I could even get him to elaborate on that if he was. I mean, I had him write up what the soils were and everything, but I can, he can do elaborate on that.
Does the city have any comment on that?
The reason subdivision requires, if you don't have a test period to run it back to 24 inches, you have to have a second test pit. Most of these are 16 to 18 inches, so each lot required two test pits.
Okay, so the fact that he's got three...
That means he had to do three to get two to pass, probably.
Well, no, I asked him to do three.
Oh, you asked him to do three?
Because of the lay of the land, it's flat areas. So I figured it'd be better to have knowing more.
Okay, that's more clear to me now, thank you.
Just looking at these, they all were under 24 inches, so that's why we had raised two on each lot.
Okay, cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Michelle?
If there's no questions from the board, I can proceed. So the first question is the phosphorus standards on page 12 of 13 of the application. This is, so when we do stormwater management, if it's in the watershed of a great pond, you have to use the phosphorus standard. So you have to make sure that your project does not exceed the allowed phosphorus, pound of phosphorus per year for that water body. So often when we have those, we'll see a building envelope or an amount of developable, developable land to be allowed. You said that that was going to be attached in the report, but I did not find it. Are you going to provide it next time?
Yes, I can, I'll go through it. As I had Arrow, had a fine engineer, didn't I?
Well, it says here on page, it says that the DEP showing phosphorus budget pre and post will be attached to this report, and I did not find it. So, and what kind of put me on the track is I did not see building envelopes. So that's one thing I think that's important to know. The other thing to remind the board is that, since we haven't done a land subdivision for a while and I've talked, we've talked to Mac about that, is that on the plan, there should be a note stating what type of road this road will be designed to. And this road, per the ordinance, needs to be paved then. Unless the, something was mentioned, not today, obviously, in the next meeting, that he may go to the council to seek a waiver from that. Just, just to say that this ordinance was written. The problem is that when we have a lot of dirt road, they don't get maintained and people come back to the city looking for help. That's why the ordinance was changed, basically saying, you paved the road and we will take it over, or you can have, they could also go to the council to make sure that the council is, there's no financial hardship and are going to be willing to take it over. So I just want to remind the board of the history and also that that should be a paved subdivision road for the ordinance.
And what I'm doing is talking to my client and see if he's agreeable to plan to pave it. The other thing it might be, we might ask for a little timeframe to have the paving done instead of having the condition of selling the first lot or something like that. And we might be allowed to sell four, five lots before it's paved. I mean, I've done in the past some of the early work I've done, but...
The only thing with that is that the subdivision ordinance states that the road needs to be actually constructed to the level of that law. But that does not mean that it could not be done, all done in dirt until the last layer also.
That's what I'm...
Okay.
Any further questions from the board or the city? Once again, this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure? It's naptime.
Yeah, apparently. I was just trying to find the reference to the... Oh, so all these specifications are for the entrance driveway then? This isn't, these aren't road construction details, these are just for the entrance. Where did you see the... I'm looking in the application and it says, "Proposed protective covenants and road association new entrance permit." I'm trying to figure out where it specifies the road. Or is that on the drawing? Well...
What I've done there is put copies of what's going to go on the final plan that's in there to read.
Oh, here it is, the road association agreement. Oh, so this really isn't about road construction, this is just who's going to share the cost.
Right, basically, yeah.
Let me just remind us all, this is a preliminary application, so we're interested in seeing that we have everything that's required, but we're not making any decisions on the merits of what's provided.
Okay.
Just that it's here. And then if everything is fine at the next go-around, we don't need to go to a third.
Can I ask one more question? I know it's like quite a dry area, but was there a wetland survey then?
Yeah, the, it's the same one...
Oh, yeah, that's right, there's a big one, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the funny thing is that that entire wetland, it was a man-made deal that came from the culverts up on the main road years ago. And our new road design and stormwater will end up kind of getting rid of some of that wetland just by virtue of taking care of the stormwater instead of letting it go. But either way, we've covered it because we've got it covered.
Yeah, I remember we had that conversation, actually.
So there was also a comment about the age of some of the letters to the state agencies? It was your intention to...
Yeah, I'm going to update it. And what I did is I called the three different state agencies and just kind of got a verbal that nothing's changed. But now I'm going to get the letters with the new data.
Okay, so those will be on the final plan package?
Because the historic association got a chuckle because I told them it'd been eight years and we wanted to...
History can happen very quickly.
All right, so I'm just looking at the TRT memo. And I think your letter sort of addresses, your addendum here addresses all of them.
I mentioned where the different items will be added to the road association as well as conditions. Some of the wording is on that little addendum I added.
Okay, and you agree with the residential road design standard?
Yeah.
And it's just a question of timing for the applicant of when that would... What, is it possible to construct a roadbed like that and then pave it later? To bring it to standard, they can ride on it?
After that, be crowned a road.
So as long as you build, I guess, an appropriate base, then paving it is just the last step?
Yeah, just come back and dress it up, make sure it's crowned right. In this case, it's super elevated, it's all going across at an angle, but...
I don't think they know what's super elevated means.
Yeah.
It means it's all banking towards one side, it's not crowned.
It goes to one side, that's part of our stormwater, the side of the road, but either way, that's...
And the fire inspector is happy with the location of this tank now and the access that you, they've constructed to get to that?
Yeah, and there'll be some more final details for them as well. A little more, a little classier.
Turnarounds are okay?
Yes, sir. We've met or I or two and discussed this. And we have, and we plan on meeting some more again in the future.
Now, is this proposed road in the future, is there an extension proposed? Or is it, does it not go any further or can it go any further?
No, ours cannot. The only thing that could happen is the right-of-way that we're giving to the, adjoining to the south. But ours is there, it's permanent, it's done, there's no further property there.
Does the city have any other concerns?
No, we're going to work with the applicant to make sure that all the things that were on the memo are taken care of, that... on the memo are taken care of, that reconstruction detail are given, and we've had a discussion with them as well on these items.
Do we, are we complete then with the fact that he's going to add language to the deed? Do we need that now to be complete?
No, because we have the basic thing presented.
All right.
And, you know, it's next, again, it's next time that we'll go into whether it's all good enough, so...
You guys have any other concerns about completeness? All I'm thinking about is, I guess, the phosphorus... Can't even read my note here. You want a building envelope for the phosphorus?
Well, if he's doing an, if he's looking at how much phosphorus is exported, the only way you can do this is by knowing how much area is going to be disturbed, is going to... So, and that includes house lots. So what they usually do is they do a building envelope for those house lots.
Is that something we need to consider for completeness?
No, I don't think so, because we have the plan.
And he mentions phosphorus in there, it's just, it's the detailed calculations that you're not comfortable with?
Well, yeah, it just, it needs to be wrapped up a bit more.
Okay.
But we have it now. It may not be perfect, which is what the next time it's for.
Okay.
What I'll do is talk to Arrow on what he has in there. It sounds like something may be missing. When I looked at it, it was three quarters of an inch thick, and I was happy that it was completed.
I'm with you.
But I can check it to be sure.
There is a ruler for happiness.
Okay, well, unless you guys have...
There's one more comment?
Yeah, there's one more comment that he's going to be happy about, that I'm not happy about, but...
That's not good.
Jenna just showed me that, I guess I wrote in the ordinance, that if you had a residential street that had less than 100 ADT, pavement may be waived in the rural area. So I think that that's something that the council may look upon favorably. There, I believe there's eight lots, I think it's eight times, that may be just over or under, but enough to be within that range of easily getting a waiver for a dirt road if that's what you wanted.
With pavement?
Yeah. It still needs to be built as standards, but you wouldn't have to do the pavement.
Okay, so it seems like the pieces are here, and I'm not thinking of making any conditions unless you guys have...
Looks like everything's well in hand for that stuff. Applicant knows what concerns are of the city and...
Okay, yeah, and it sounds like he has a good start on a lot of them already. So, hearing that, Mr. Chairman, with regard to this preliminary plan, for a major subdivision titled Hardwood Ridge by Coastal Builders &amp; Son, this proposal to create eight plus lots, one to the joiner, and develop eight residential buildings on a 10.76 acre property at 141 North Band Road, we find that this is unallowed use in this zone. And the application is complete in terms of submission materials per the ordinance. And we find this application complete.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please? Okay. I would suggest that we hold on to this application as it is. And that any changes are given to us before the next meeting, but only those things, so that you don't have to do the whole packet of stuff. Is that good in your mind?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll carefully index it, have it so that it can be just referenced and followed.
I'm getting my reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item of business is preliminary plan for a major use site development plan and major subdivision titled A&amp;J Rentals for Ashley A. Andrews and Jacob Knowles. The proposal is to create two nine-unit apartment buildings on a 15.3 acre property of 431 Main Street. Tax map 35 lot eight in the neighborhood zone is someone representing the applicant.
Andrew McCullough representing the applicant.
Let's see if we could wrap this up before Michelle gets back.
All right, let's do it. I'm all for that. We've prepared plans...
We're not fast. I just suggested that we wrap this up before you got back in here.
I don't think the applicants are going to be happy, Mr. Chairman.
No, the question is, would you be happy?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, please.
As is stated, the applicant is proposing to construct two nine-unit apartment buildings. Each, each unit will have two bedrooms. The, the site is adjacent to the city water, and so it will be served by city water. However, there is not sewer out that far, and so we have proposed subsurface wastewater disposal areas for disposal of wastewater. We have proposed an entrance drive, if you will, and we've, speaking for the applicant, we've obtained a name, William Way, for it. This drive, if you will, is approximately 500 feet long into the site. It does cross two... Well, the road actually crosses one wet, one narrow wetland area, and there's a minor amount of wetland impact up near the building also. However, those wetland impacts total less than 4,300 square feet, and so they do not require an RPA permit. The... Talking about the utilities a little bit more, in the comments from Inspector Hangey, we, per the comments of Inspector Hangey, we revised the hydrant location, and so we have a hydrant located at approximately Station 2+50. And what that does is that allows for hydrant to be within 500 feet of any unit, per the fire protection ordinance. And then smaller water lines will go from there into service the buildings. We have prepared a stormwater management plan in accordance with the city's standards that addresses both quality and quantity. Peak flows are, post-development peak flows are significantly less than pre-development peak flows, and we have treated 95% of the impervious area and greater than 80% of the overall developed area. How we did that, we have one underdrained soil filter below where the two units in the parking are going. So all the stormwater runoff from that area, the intensely developed area, if you will, drains into that. And then along the road at points where the grades worked out, we have two small 10 by 36 underdrained soil filters that the stormwater runoff will run into. The entrance is, in the location that I reviewed, both with Larry Wilson and with Dwight, that has adequate site distance, have talked about site distance in the application. And it's in the location of an existing gravel turnout that was probably constructed with solid sand some long time ago. We have provided a location for a dumpster that is screened. We have provided, per the TRT comments, we have provided some landscaping between the buildings and the parking areas. We also have an island, which was actually the idea of the applicant, and it does a great deal to break up the overall mass of the parking area. So there is an island down through the middle of that that's mounted up and will be landscaped also, so that it kind of cuts down the feeling of size in that parking area. The, as far as, when the ordinance talks about buffering, we have existing, the actual building area is actually surrounded by woods, and so the actual building area is buffered from flooding properties. One other comment, and I'll just touch base on a couple of the comments from the TRT. We did shrink the length of the island a little bit so that it would facilitate a fire apparatus to maneuver around the end of it. We may sit down and talk with Inspector Hangey a little bit further, because we don't want to, we'd like not to encourage through traffic. We understand the need for a fire apparatus to be able to maneuver, but we don't want to encourage through traffic. So how we do that with maybe a different surface in that area, or something that where we're not just paving it and encouraging all the vehicles to just kind of do loops up there. That's something we would like not to do. I know Michelle had asked for, or at the TRT meeting, I was not there, it was requested, the national wetland inventory map, and that is in the application. The... And I do realize or recognize that the lighting table, there is a lighting plan in your application, a lighting site plan. There is not a max min lighting table on the plan at this point. There is a lighting plan and fixture specifications in the application, and a table that compares the ordinance requirement to what we've proposed. So that is in the application. I will say that, and so that I'm not talking just off my hat... Per the, per the TRT comments, I did revise the proposed fixture at the active building entrance. I have proposed a fixture that has a, has a minimum of eight-foot candles, and the ordinance is 10, and... How is that? No, the ordinance is eight, my minimum is 10, the maximum is 15. I've provided 10. The average maximum is 12, per the ordinance, and I provided 10. So I'm above the min, below the max. And frankly, what that does is it makes my average maximum on the walkway above the average maximum in the ordinance, but it meets the maximum.
It was hard to conclude all this because you did not, you were missing some of the, I had to fill it in.
Are you referring to this revised table?
I am, but the bold...
The bold or the standard?
The bold is the standard. The bold is the standard. So on the parking lot, on the parking lot, I have a minimum of .3 on the plan. The ordinance minimum is .2.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, it was, it, it would be good if it, it would be easier if it was noted, what is the standard, what's provided, and it's, because...
So I can, I can alter that table so that one says standard and one says, one column says provided.
Would you also put it on the plan?
Yeah, I figured that, I mean, after...
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I had, I mean, I was, because the first table had doorstep, and I had trouble reconciling both, so...
So, yes, it will be put on the plan, and yes, I will revise the table to make it clear what is the ordinance requirement and what is, what has been provided.
You realize that you're taking, you're removing numerous questions from this desk from being expressed, Matt?
That's the goal.
Clarity?
Um, clarity. The, another thing that I don't think is noted that is missing, I do not have a response from Larry Wilson regarding the adequacy of water supply in the application. I have a letter that you can see that I sent to him. I also did send him an email, and I, he's on vacation this week. I don't know what happened, because we discussed it, he was fine with it. He said, "I know I need to give you a letter," and that will be included in my final. And it's, it, per the discussion, it's not an issue, but it is not there at this point. Other letters, like historic and natural areas, they are included. Other letters like historic and natural areas, they are included.
Are you ready for us to...
I am.
Put you under the heat lamp there?
I am, yeah.
Okay, questions, Board?
I'll put on the tech log.
The fire inspector mentioned something about, you're going to draw water from the same supply that goes to the hydrant as well?
Yes.
Those are the same source?
Correct.
And you wanted to just make sure that there was adequate capacity left over for the fire system, right, or?
Correct. The buildings, the individual buildings are required to be sprinkled by state statute code and building codes and the fire codes. One of the things that we want to make sure is that, and we've indicated that to Andrew and the contractor, that because of the elevation, that they have adequate waters to supply those sprinkler, that sprinkler system for the buildings, of which they will have to get some sort of hydraulic calculations done by the sprinkler company to make sure that they can meet that. The hydrant being 250 feet along the roadway, again, meets the minimum requirements of the fire prevention ordinance so that we have access to most furthest department if we need to, if we need to actually lay a above-ground fire water supply line from that hydrant. We should be able to do that. That hydrant is actually fed with a six-inch line to that point and then separated from there to the remaining buildings that are up there.
That's their domestic supply?
That would be their domestic supply that way. It would be their domestic supply as well as the water supply for their sprinkler system, which is appropriately, can be appropriately done through the sprinkler code.
Oh, so those would share some infrastructure up until they become the sprinkler system?
They can do that.
So that's, the water superintendent is the one that's going to tell you that he can supply all those needs in his letter?
Well, the, two things, if you will. Ultimately, as far as for sprinkler protection before they can obtain a building permit, that's when really the sprinkler company does typically a flow calc and a, or a flow analysis and a pressure analysis here at, at least the hydrant, and then determines what is or isn't required up at the building. They might say, "We've got to run a three-inch from the hydrant instead of a two-inch."
Oh, right, so that'll adapt.
So that would be, that would be a game time decision, if you will.
All right, so that'll help, you'll, they'll work with you to design what they need.
Yes, that has to be worked from that end. They will work with the applicant, with us, to get there.
Okay.
Okay. But as far as, and then, but Larry's, Larry's letter is, I had to do an analysis of what is required for domestic supply, what I estimate is necessary for peak domestic demand, if you will. And so I did do that and, and again, put that in an email to him, and I will have a letter of response. I know, I believe he gets back from vacation next week, and I'll log him...
Okay.
...to get that.
All right, sounds good. Were you proposing to do this development in phases?
Well, as far as, as far as the immediate, yes, the immediate plan is to build one building, right? I mean, we're, our site plan approval right now, subdivision approvals for this entire project, these 18 units. The plan is first to do nine and then get those done and get those up and running and then do, build the other nine units.
The follow-up question then would be, would you do, would you implement the whole parking structure, the parking, like, all those spots in that first phase, or would you just build part of that? Or would you just do all that from the beginning and then do the buildings in the second phase for the second group?
Yes, the parking lot is planned on going.
Okay. So that's going to open, that's going to get him his access that he wants?
That's going to facilitate the access that he needs.
Cool.
I just had a question regarding the HHE 200 forms. I didn't, so this is more an aside than anything else, just curiosity. I didn't see the attached, the attached plan, the...
Maybe 11 by 17?
Well, just showing where on the property they fit. I mean, it's on the plot.
Right.
And that's a...
I did not, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying, and yes, no, that is not included separately to there right now.
Okay. I also didn't notice any elevation reference point, but that's an old...
Details.
What?
Details.
I know, but I...
No, that will be...
I can remember getting flat on my belly to cite one.
Yesterday I set one, and I put it 47 inches above grade so that Lori and Dwight will be looking straight on.
So that would be 65.
No, the ERP will be on the final plan.
He figured, or he wouldn't issue the permit.
He won't issue the permit.
Yeah, but that's very thoughtful of you.
I have received enough input, I will say, to get them up off the ground.
Well, they also say that many years ago, I had to do an inspection at night, and my daughter held the flashlight on the ERP so I could cite it, but...
Teamwork.
You know.
Or is that child labor?
Did you pay her?
No, actually, I did not pay her. She has paid me back for this.
How bad.
This is a public hearing, does anyone wish to comment on this matter? No, okay, close public hearing.
Does the city have anything else that they want to add in their TRT? Are you happy with the way things have gone?
Well, he's got a few things to add, if I remember correctly, for the final, but it's all things that are manageable.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that people realize, and it's in the ordinance, but that this road and this parking lot is not going to be paved. This is not a paved site. Just so, it's not, there's nothing in the ordinance against that, but just want to make sure people know that.
Okay. And it's acceptable to the city as a road in that condition, as long as it's built to those standards?
Well, it's going to be built to standard, the first, the throat of the road will be paved. The city's never going to take this over. And it's really, it's a road, but it's really not, you know, an access to one project.
Oh, right, okay, so it's not multiple owners back there?
Correct.
I get it.
The first portion of the road needs to be built to standard, but it's not like...
Is that the condition of the entrance permit, the pavement?
Well, that's a DOT, and it's also a city requirement that the road be paved, or makes a mess on the road.
The, I will add that the intent, when this is overall complete and then, would be to pave, pave it. No, I mean, we're not...I mean, that's not...
Oh, really?
I don't say it's sealed in stone right at this minute, but that's the intent.
Yeah.
But, no, it's not required to be paved, and we're not, yeah, I mean, the plan is...
So they want to get the project going, lease a few, yeah, perfect, yeah.
But you have a, you split that path and walk right down the middle for an elevation point.
I get it.
So if you don't pave that the first winter, that's going to be gone. So now all your water is going to be pitching in one direction instead of being supporting going in two directions, right? If this, if this half-foot elevation difference goes away, which I assume you put there to support the water in two directions.
I did, correct. And you're right, you, it would either, I mean, and the catch with a gravel parking or roadway is that it does require more maintenance, and so that's one of the, one of the reasons to pave it is because then you're not back there with a grader. But, I mean, it could be done, that it would need to be recreated, you know, any grades would need to be dressed up in the spring.
Is the island that dividing line then between those?
No, actually, it's perpendicular to the buildings.
No, it's perpendicular to the buildings. It's right through the middle of the island, if you will, and drains both.
Oh, so the island's not going to help divert in one direction?
Well, I mean, it diverts from the upper building, if you will, and the upper parking lot, so it, but the, and the island's not going to get disturbed in the wintertime.
Okay.
It's, what Dwight is saying is true as far as, you know, if a plow digs in at the beginning of season and the season when things are soft, he can alter grades so that stormwater doesn't go where it is intended to go.
It will, it's not, it can, it will alter grade.
Yeah, well, it will, it will, and then it has to be redone.
Is that, would you consider that part of the stormwater management plan then?
We could, we could, we could put that as a maintenance item.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, typically, in a, in a, for a maintenance item on a gravel road, part of it is to grade and crown the road. So yes, that can be in a maintenance item in our, in our maintenance plan.
To manage the stormwater, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Well, to make sure the grades are, stay consistent.
That might be beyond the scope of tonight's meeting, but certainly something we'd discuss.
Right, but no, it addresses the issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, are you prepared to make a motion of completeness?
Are we at that point, yes? With regard to the preliminary plan for a major use site development plan and major subdivision titled A and J Reynolds for Ashley Andrews, Jake Knowles, the proposal to create two nine-unit apartment buildings on a 15.3-acre property at 431 Main Street in the neighborhood zone, we find that this is allowed use in the zone. And that we find the application in, complete in terms of the submission materials for the site development review and the subdivision ordinance, with the condition that the letter from the Water Department be obtained showing, you know, adequate water supply to the project. And that would make the application complete.
Do we need a little bit on the lighting tables?
Oh, and another, just a heads up for you, yeah, we would like to have the lighting tables clarified as far as presentation and depicted on the plans for review.
End of motion?
End of motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, is that good?
Any discussion? All in favor, please? Now, if you want to replace yourself with yourself for the next application.
I don't know, I don't know how much I need to do for the next application. I'll stay right here.
Next item of business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Given the upcoming agenda item, I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
Okay.
So I'll be stepping away from the table for a little bit.
That means no motion is possible, right?
You're on your own.
Next item of business is location of marijuana, of the medical marijuana dispensary. Proposals to locate the Down East District Medical Marijuana Dispensary, main organic therapy to the Acadia Crossing subdivision lot seven at the intersection of Route Three and Myrick Street. Text map and lot is 1747-7 in the commercial zone, and I believe Esther McCullough is with us once again.
We modified slightly the plan that was submitted by Vernon and Lois Chapason at the corner of Myrick Street and Route Three to reflect the existing conditions that are there now.
Okay.
Okay, the building was not built quite as shown, I mean, it basically, the front of it is a little different, there isn't quite such a prominent bump out there, and the pavement, it was paved similar, but a little bit different, and so we tried to show how that was actually done in the field. And we showed the current number of parking spaces on the plan. So, and the applicant is proposing to lease a portion of this building, 4,000 square feet.
Correct.
And so we also prepared two submittals as part of the application, one discussing the estimated trip generation for the facility, and one addressing the parking needs for the facility. And I don't need to...I don't have necessarily a perfect number, however, I try to use my best judgment based on the input from the applicant as far as how his existing facility is used and scaling that up to the size of this building, as well as try to at least look at a couple of land uses that had a little bit of similarity and so that could maybe take some guidance from them. So the existing, the existing building at the corner of Myrick has a total of 50 parking spaces. And with an equal distribution between three tenants, main organic therapy will have the use of 16 to 17 of those parking spaces. Well, let's say, let's say, yeah. So based on my calculations, utilizing, if we say, if we say that this is a, and retail isn't a perfect fit, service business, maybe not quite a perfect fit, somewhere between three and 3.6 spaces per thousand square feet from the ordinance, we come up with 12 to 14 or 15 spaces. 12 to 14 or 15 spaces. So it seems reasonable that there is adequate parking there. Based on the current number of visitors for the size of the building that they are in now, they average approximately 80 visitors per day or 160 trips per day. A maximum of 10 visitors per hour or 20 trips during the hour. If we estimate that their business will increase by 50% as a result of the location, relocation, we would come up to 240 trips per day or approximately 30 trips during a peak hour. I, I will and this is a little bit of an aside, but if I recall correctly, when we were discussing Global Beverage and their relocation last year, I believe that we were in the realm of about 30 peak hour trips for that facility also when they relocate, for their relocated facility. So if we say that approximately 30 peak hour trips disappeared from this property, it seems reasonable to say that we're not having an increase in peak hour trips with the relocation of Main Organic Therapy. The, there were some questions raised at the TRT meeting and I believe Joseph responded to Michelle in an email with answers to those questions.
Yes, sign, ventilation, and security.
Yes.
Security is not necessarily part of the, the, if I may, the security was not necessarily part of the land use application, but it's definitely part of the state standards and it's also in the licensing, so we just were interested. Ventilation and sign were part of chapter 56.
And what, specifically which page am I?
Ventilation is under, I believe it's under section eight and I believe there's, there's two sections that talks about that. There's 801.3.
Okay, yes.
And then I believe there's also... Well, there's 801, for the moment, there's 801.3 until I find the other one. Another section that talks about... But basically, they're, they're reciprocal. They're both places where it talks about this, it's basically the same thing. It's very vague and just... If I may say that I think that, it's my understanding that the landlord intends to put things in the lease pertaining to that. I think the landlord is not going to want to lose his, his two anchor tenants on either side. And I think it's my understanding that the applicant is looking into getting a state-of-the-art filtration system, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Carbon filter.
So he can explain that more. Just so we're frank too, is that there are other uses in the city that do admit, not that one, you know, it's not, you know, oh, they do this and we should do that, but Rooster Brothers, when they roast coffee, if you come down Grant Street at noon, which I come down often, because that's the route I take when I'm taking lunch, it's pretty poignant and if you, if it, it smells like burnt toast, it does not smell anything like coffee. And then, so that's one of them that's existing, so. Of course, this is a use that we're a bit more like prudent, I think. But I think it's my understanding that they're going to have everything in place to take care of that.
I mean, again, we, we don't, I'm Joseph Vasari, executive director of Main Organic Therapy. We, we don't cultivate, we're not going to, we have no plans to cultivate there, so. I mean, that's probably 99% of odor would come from the actual cultivation, so, just for the record.
Is there anything more that you need to tell us?
I can't think of anything.
Questions for the applicant? No, no. This is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak on this matter? No? Close the public hearing. Does anyone at this point have a motion in mind? Say we're deadlocked, we can't do it.
Can I get more billable hours next month?
What?
You're deadlocked, so we've got to come back, so I get more billable hours?
Only if you're billing him.
I don't think that's allowed, that's not in the ordinance.
I think your motion, man, has, has left your table.
That's true, anyhow. With regard to the location of the Medical Marijuana Dispensary on Acadia Crossing subdivision lot seven in the, at the intersection of Route Three and Myrick Street, tax map 17, lot 47-7 in the commercial zone. The board permits that it makes, it's an allowed use under Article Three. It meets the performance standards under Article Eight, is there anything I'm forgetting?
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. Well, right now, it's just the motion on completeness, right?
Well...
They have to come twice per the ordinance.
Okay, because it does not say preliminary on the agenda.
It says, so why it doesn't say preliminary, because it's a bit tricky the way it's written in the ordinance.
Okay.
And it's not really, it's...
I see, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And may I say that the other place that talks about smell is in the Medical Marijuana Standards per se under 817. I should say odor, not smell.
Okay, in that case, we find this application, the preliminary application is complete. Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there discussion? All in favor of completeness, please? Thank you. So we will see you next month. More billable hours. Yes. Yes. If there's anything to do.
Can we do it, too?
It is a rule, isn't it?
Thank you.
We're meeting with them tomorrow, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I don't know if we can continue, we're losing our audience.
I don't need an audience.
That didn't stop you before.
Hold it. But we still have a reporter here, so we're okay. We have not been totally abandoned.
All right, there's still time for another denial joke.
Next item of business, proposed amendments to the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 33 Flood Plane Management Ordinance. Proposals to review the amendments to the Flood Plane Management Ordinance and flood insurance rate maps recommended by the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry Flood Plane Management Program and to make recommendations to the city council. And who would like to talk to us about this?
I will do that, sir. This is a topic that comes up every 10 years. And luckily, this time, it has worked out better because we're actually going to get new maps. And we have the draft maps right now in the office. John, as you've worked with the old maps, one inch to 1,000 square feet, you try to work with a tax map that's one inch to 100 feet or one inch to 200 feet, it's pretty hard to do.
Well, that's why we get paid so much.
Oh, is that what it is? But what is actually going to really help us this time is you can actually see the structures on the map.
This is why you're both wearing glasses, right?
Yeah, yeah. So...
Structures of the maps?
Yes, you're going to be able to see the houses.
Makes my life easier.
Yep, yep. And we have those available, we're going to have CDs available and they should be available. The maps will be available on our city's website eventually when they're finally approved. So the realtors and the phasers and things can look at them.
We also, as an aside, we met with the gentleman who runs Main Street GIS today and so they'll be available to the public on the, on the GIS website.
You know, with this rate, we're not going to be needed anymore.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's not breaking my heart, I tell you. The problem is, and this is just off-site with this,
Yeah.
Any, we've several LOMAs that were done in Ellsworth are no longer going to be effective. So Lori has gone through and we've notified all those people who had LOMAs that may now be in the flood zone, that got the Loma to build, so they weren't in the flood zone. So that's something we're dealing with. We just did a...
Excuse me, for anyone who doesn't know, the Loma is a letter of map amendment issued by FEMA.
Right, which takes your property out of the flood zone, you have your structure out of the flood zone. But we actually just did a permit for a gentleman on Graham Lake and it appears from the information we got from the surveyor that this map has now increased that base flood point elevation by two feet on some parts of Graham Lake. So it's going to be something where we're going to be very, very cautious in our office. And we're not just going to say, well, you're close, or, you know. People are going to have to go see a surveyor because two feet, you've got to take a two-foot elevation on a pretty level piece of property, that's going in, you know, 20 or 30 feet on that lot at least. So we have to cap it, we want to make sure people are aware of that. That's basically the only change in this, this ordinance for this time around. This little amendments to the reference numbers and things to the federal registry and the federal ordinances, but the actual text is basically the same, except it does now list all the maps we do have available and what their numbers are. And this is pretty simple, but it's going to be something that's going to be good for us now because people are going to be able to come in before they purchase a piece of property and have a pretty good idea where they are. Instead of us trying to scale it out, when you get a line on that, that's 50 feet, you know, it's pretty hard to scale it out, so. So we're just looking for the planning board to recommend approval to the council and we'll be ready to go.
Okay. Any questions for the city of Ellsworth here?
Is this new FEMA system balls US-wide?
Not yet, not yet, not yet.
Were they working on it?
Well, it's all, it's the coastal areas first.
Right.
And we lucked out, we didn't end up as bad as Rockland did with the wave, three-foot wave area that they have on the coast, so.
Yeah, because I use that, I use it every day.
Yeah.
And I'm actually able to plot the house and then pull them out.
Yeah, if you have an address, you can pull it right out.
On my system, I use coordinates.
Yeah.
Just looking at the house from above and putting dots on where I need it.
But there is an error involved doing that, though.
There is.
Because that depends on how close that GPS is.
Yep, yeah, I just find it interesting now that, that they're, they're actually going to show it on their maps. That's going to be, it's going to be easier for me.
It's going to be great for everybody.
Yep.
Yeah, so what is the, just in general then, how's the public get notified that this now exists? I mean, other than the people that are in the middle of the process, as a landowner, what's my indication that I might want to look at my property again to see?
Well, you can call, we can tell you because it'll be listed on, on our division and to the records, the online programs we have in the city.
Is there any sort of notification that this rule has changed?
It's been in the paper.
Well, it's been in the paper.
Okay.
And it'll be, there'll be, there'll be no notification in paper when it goes to council.
Okay.
Now, we don't have this in our books, do we?
No.
But there is some planning board, a reference for planning board action in the draft here.
Yes.
So we should probably actually have it just in case.
Okay, so we can provide it to you, I can't provide the maps, the maps is a box, isn't it?
Yeah, no, 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 we don't, just, just what, just when we need to do something, we can look and see what we need to do.
We will be happy to provide this, we can give you the maps digitally and we can give you a copy of the one that's there. We'd be happy to do so.
The ordinance, I guess I was a little confused. I thought this was an ordinance that already existed and they are proposing to rewrite it?
Yeah, we're, we're going to repeal the old and accept the new.
Oh, so...
It's a bring it to state and federal standards.
So I guess I misunderstood the way that you characterized it then. I thought that you read this new ordinance and since our old ordinance already covers it, all we're doing is adopting the maps and the new references.
No, I know, it's easy just to adopt the whole document.
Ah, okay, so we're going to trash the old one and replace it with this one. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
That way, if I make a mistake putting it back, putting it together.
See, that was different than what I said earlier.
I'm working out for myself, because if we take it exactly as FEMA gave it to us, we have nothing to worry about.
Okay.
No, that's not true, you have stuff to worry about when the angry property under comes.
Well, that's right, I'd rather deal with them than with FEMA.
More reasonable person to deal with.
That's right.
Okay. I, I don't want to displace you, so would you like to make the motion?
It's a public hearing?
Oh, public, yes, this is a public hearing, does any member of the public who might still be here wish to comment?
Steve?
I'll say.
Here we go, I'll close the public hearing. Well, now's the time to, you know, you could ask a question.
This is a federal organization, FEMA?
Yes.
So I make a motion...
Federal Emergency Management.
I make a motion that we allow the federal government to write our flood plane ordinance.
Yes.
I recommended the city council that we let the federal government write our subdivision, our flood plane ordinance.
That's what you want to...
It's my motion.
That's funny.
Is there a second? This is failing for lack of second, you know.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay.
Don't want to get involved with the federal government.
Is there?
I can let them do it.
Is there any discussion?
Wait till the insurance comes up.
Would you like to just have that say and make a favorable recommendation to the city council?
Yes, we word that appropriately.
The flood plane ordinance, right?
Yes. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
One abstention?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Good choice.
Before you move to the signing of my list of adjournments?
It's not, so, so signing of my list is not on the agenda.
I had to fit it on one page.
We don't have to do that. You need to negotiate with us.
I believe you can vote and if there's a unanimous vote, we can add an agenda item.
It may not be, you know, I think I can guarantee it won't be unanimous.
Okay.
So you need to negotiate with us.
Well, so what I need to say is I'd like you to reconsider... Well, so what I need to say is I'd like you to reconsider. So we need to go back to agenda item on the medical marijuana.
Yes.
Is you talked about being an allowed use under Article Three. Under Article Three, it's not mentioned, it's mentioned under Article Eight.
Well, okay, but
Eight seventeen under zone.
On the chart, you can squeak, you can fit that in. So, anyhow. Well, actually, yes, because it's, 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 it's a commercial use. Allowed in the commercial zone. So, anyhow. Why don't we do this? If there's no other business, let us adjourn and then sign the mylaws. That way, as soon as our signatures are done, those who wish to leave may leave.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?